Call a meeting to order. I want to welcome everybody here. I'd like to call on Counselor Carrie Penner to bring the opening, please.
Thank you. So, summer officially begins tomorrow, and signs of the season are, of course, everywhere. Just finished our Summer in the City celebrations. Construction on our city streets and sidewalks is in full swing and well underway, and our splash parks and pools open. Flowers are on our streets, hung up, and our yards are in bloom, and everything is beautiful and green. School is just about finished for the year, and the kids are excited to begin enjoying the long, hot days of summer at the beach or pool or in their backyards. The J.Cap Library is also in summer mode. Their summer reading program is enormously successful and accounts for great numbers of books being read and enjoyed by many young people. I love books, too. As a young girl, I would read anything I could get my hands on. Every few weeks, I would order more books through the Winnipeg Library Mail Service, and when those books arrived, I would devour them with pleasure. Once finished, they could be sent back by the post, and a new list of titles would arrive. I would eagerly peruse the columns for anything that spiked my interest. A new order would be sent, and I had to patiently wait up to two weeks for the next order to arrive. This was at a time when our own library was quite limited in its collection. Even today, one of my favorite things to do on vacation is to take as much time as I want to browse a bookstore or library and browse the titles for hours. It is a very special place for me. So today, I'm going to see if you can guess the top 10 most-read books in the world. Now, some of you, I'm sure, will say the Bible, and you would be right. The Bible is the number-one read book in the world at 3.9 billion copies. So I'll start at number 10, The Diary of Anne Frank; number nine, Think and Grow Rich; number eight, Gone with the Wind; number seven, Twilight: The Saga; number six, The Da Vinci Code; number five, The Alchemist; number four, Lord of the Rings; number three, Harry Potter, which was 4 million copies; number two, quotations from the works of Mao Zedong at 820 million copies. I found this list fascinating. It covers such a broad range of topics like religion, psychology, inspiration, science fiction, fantasy, adventure, biology, biography, drama, politics, and finance. So whatever you choose to read this summer, I hope you enjoy the wonderful world of books.
Thank you, Counselor Penner. We have the agenda in front of us. I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda, please. Counselor Swigstraw, seconded by Counselor Fair. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor, carried. We have council minutes from June 6th on page 1. You've all had a chance to review those. Can I have a motion to accept those, please? Counselor Siemens, seconded by Counselor Penner. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor, carried. There's no business arising from the minutes. We'll now move to the reports and recommendations from the city manager. We have 8A, and this is a report or request for information on the Aquatic Center stat holiday operations. This is on page 16 for council's reference. Mr. Workington, what do you have to add?
Well, Mr. Mayor and members of council, the report package does appear on pages 16 through 18 in your agenda package. The analysis that was done by our pool manager was fairly thorough and tried to be not limited, but at least tried to summarize all the information that was presented. It actually was quite extensive. The challenge with many recreation facilities, including the Steinbeck Aquatic Center, is there are always financial implications, as are noted in the package. But with respect to the public interest, as was gathered via some informal surveys, there was some general indication with respect to the original question that was put by council as to what are the possibilities for opening on stat holidays such as Lujia Real Day and Victoria Day. From the members of the public, there was generally some very high interest that was indicated. At any rate, the Steinbeck Aquatic Center does result in some significant operating costs for the city year over year. However, given the public interest that has been expressed, the overall recommendation that we would like to provide to council is that it appears that, in particular, the Lujia Real Day and Victoria Day holidays are two of the particular stat holidays where the Steinbeck Aquatic Center currently is not open. However, there appears to be the greatest interest being expressed by the public for the city to have that facility open on those days. And despite the financial concerns that are present within the report, recommendation is that, overall, should council wish the city to open on some additional days, those are the two best candidates with respect to all factors considered. And as far as any other days, that would be up to council's direction as to what they would like to see.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Penner.
I'd like to make a motion that we open on Lujia Real Day and Victoria Day, but that we close on Remembrance Day. So it would be a net increase of one day.
Okay. Thank you, seconded by Counselor Swigstraw. Go ahead.
Yeah, the pool is a service we provide to the community, and I've heard many times over the past numerous years that, particularly Family Day, there's a lot of interest in the pool being open as well as Victoria Day. So I think that makes sense that we open on those days. How about Remembrance Day? If we look at the numbers, there's not a significant demand on Remembrance Day, so I think it's -- we should close on Remembrance Day. It's also a nice gesture, given the nature of the holiday, I think, for city facilities to be closed on that day. This is only an increase of one extra day in terms of operating losses. That is a very small percentage of the 1.6 million deficit that there is already, so I don't think that's going to be a significant issue. Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Swigstraw. Sorry, just before -- just wanted to verify. There's 1.6 operating costs. The net deficit is usually around $800,000, just to be clear. Counselor Swigstraw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the motion, and the reason I support it is that the purpose of the aquatic center is to provide a service to the public, and aquatic centers don't make money anywhere. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't try to recover as much in costs as we can. We do make that effort, and obviously, there is going to be a net operating loss with any pool, any aquatic center. That being said, we know that there is a public interest in having the pool open on these couple of extra days. These are long weekends in February and May, where, you know, those are the types of Mondays where families are looking for additional activities, and having the pool open is a great opportunity. We see that the August holiday, there are a significant number of swims that day, and I think that we would see quite likely similar numbers in these other holidays, particularly if it's well-known that the pool is open that day. And by closing on Remembrance Day, which is a day where the number of swims is quite low, especially compared to the other dates that it's -- other holidays in which it's open, that this is not going to have a huge impact on the bottom line, because that is a day where, when you have fewer people, there's higher costs, you know, the losses. So I think these other two days, we will have better cost recovery and will better serve the public.
Thank you. Further discussion from council? Counselor Fair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like a question for administration. Just curious, would you, Mr. Workington, would you have available for us the information on what -- is there a day in the week that is not used very much at all, like Monday or?
I will say that generally, Monday through Friday, and I would say also for a portion of Saturdays, there is regularly programmed activities such as water safety and swim lesson instruction. So that's something that's already factored into the regular day-to-day programming.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything in closing?
Nothing in closing.
All right. Counsel, this is something that was brought up, and I think is an important question from time to time to look at what services we're providing. Obviously, we've had good information from our staff to review this, and I think the recommendation -- the motion from Counselor Penner, I think, is a good one and reasonable, and will allow for more services for our citizens, so it's a good thing. Call for the question. All those in favor, carried. We'll now move to the public hearing, Variation V 2017-08. This is 339 PTH 12 North. This is on page 4 for council. Close of council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Workington.
This is an application for variance file V-2017-08 for property with a civic address of 339 PTH 12 North. Owner of the property is Russell Penner, with the applicant for the variance being Three Way Builders LTD. Purpose of the variance application is twofold. Firstly, to allow a total of 32 parking stalls, whereas zoning bylaw 2055 requires a minimum of 50 parking stalls for the proposed addition. Secondly, to allow a parking aisle width of 20 feet, whereas city zoning bylaw 2055 requires the parking aisle width to be 25 feet. Purpose or the general intent, the business located at the property, Keystone Agro-Motive, is currently undergoing an expansion, and the owner has requested the variance to allow for less parking than what is required. Notices as required under the Planning Act have been sent. There is no registered correspondence or comments to the file. The proposed site plan has been provided in council's information package, and I do believe we also have an aerial photo of the subject property for further information to provide additional context. With respect to the application, the comments from both the city planner and city engineer and also city manager are attached. Just from the overall comments that are there, I would like to advise council that we believe it's important to keep in mind that council's consideration of the variance application should not be based on the current needs as seen by the tenant, but based on the improved uses within the zoning bylaw. As a result, recommendation from administration is that council deny the application to reduce the number of parking stalls, however that council approve the application to reduce the parking aisle width to 20 feet.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to represent the applicant? Thank you.
Please, you know the drill. I'm representing here as representative of Three Way Builders, who with Keystone Agro-Motive, Russell Penner being my client. Our address is 320 PTH 12 North in Steinbeck, our company address, and that's my mailing address. So I want one clarification made. We're not requesting a reduction of 232 parking stalls. We're requesting a reduction of 32 paved parking stalls, not 32 parking stalls. There's plenty enough parking stalls on that property. So I think that, I guess that this is in response to the, to what I heard from the management, this is simply a matter of saying that they want parking, a certain number of paved parking stalls on the site. So I guess the, if, I'm not sure I understand, maybe I don't understand the bylaw correctly, but my understanding of it is, and hopefully, Mr. Workington can clarify, my understanding of it is that you need to, we need to pave the parking lot if we're, if the entrance is directly onto a pavement. Is that, am I correct in that, or am I incorrect?
We'll mark that down, and, Mr. Workington, do you have a quick answer for that?
That is generally a correct interpretation. The particular item within the city zoning bylaw that Mr. Newfield refers to is Section 115.4b, and that is the case.
Okay. Thank you.
So the only reason that this even applies, then, is the fact that there's a gravel that comes right up to the corner of this, of this driveway, where the part, where the pavement starts on the north road where Co-op, across from Co-op. The other entrances to this property are on a gravel service road. And it becomes, and I think that to impose on the owner how many parkings, paved parking stalls he should have just because we think it's good, is really determining to, for them, what's good for their business. And I know that there's bylaws that we have to apply to, and I'm not opposing bylaws, per se, but I think that there, there, one of the reasons that, my understanding is that that bylaw is in place, that you don't want to drag gravel onto pavement. However, you have a gravel road that's coming right onto pavement in this case. You're not dragging gravel from the parking lot nearly as much as you are from the gravel road adjacent to it, because of the speed of traffic and, and the number of stalls. So it, my client wants to do some paving on that yard. It's not a question of, does he, does he want to pave or doesn't he want? He wants to do some paving on, on the yard. But in order to, but his, our, when we look at that property, it makes a lot of sense to pave along the building on both sides, and to give, which would give them 40 feet of asphalt or paving from the sidewalk, 40 feet back. And to make them pave, if you even look at that site, you can see all the equipment parked over there, and the building is coming forward toward the highway, and then we want to add another row of parking to the north, and that's going to take more, more, more yard away from, or we can maybe spread some parking stalls throughout the property itself, because the, the employees don't even park in front of the building where this paving is going to happen. So I believe that it would be prudent to work with the, with the client and with the property owner to say, yes, let him, like, pave something that makes sense, not something that is a requirement just because we require so many parking stalls. So that is our, that's our request. We think that, we know that the 32 parking, paved parking stalls that we're, that we're requesting are sufficient for the traffic that is there, and I think the bigger question is, are we going to impose a restriction that doesn't make sense on a landowner at his cost? Doesn't matter how much money he has or doesn't have. So that's why we're requesting this.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant at this time, or for the representative of the applicant? Counselor Penner.
Thank you. Through you, to the applicant. So just to understand correctly, your basis for requesting less paved parking is because your accesses are, are from the road is from gravel to gravel? Just explain that a little further.
It's from, well, it's from gravel, except in one instance. On the north, on the north, it is right, the pavement ends right at that driveway, but it goes, it goes just past the driveway. So then it technically falls under the, under the zoning application. So, and, and it's not that, so, in this instance, we've already been allowed not to have the, the paved driveway connecting to the, to the highway, because we have to bring, there's traffic of movement of, of equipment back and forth along that, that north end there, so to go over top of, of asphalt all the time would be, would be really a challenge. So really, that connection going from gravel onto pavement is there anyway. But I don't, and, and my client's not objecting to paving some, to paving some, and I don't know, you don't have the, the building there, the layout there that we're proposing, which I do have, but it does make sense, I think, of where he's proposing it. So I don't know if you have it in your package, but you're proposing that on the full north side and the full west side of the, the new building, plus on the north side going, extending past the, the old building as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Are there any further questions for the applicant?
Yep.
For the applicant? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just using this map right here, just, because, yeah, we do have this one in our package, but it's very small print in our package, and so if you could point out to us on this map just clearly where you're proposing, where the paved parking would be, and where the extra gravel stalls are going to be, and what the difficulty with having the additional paved parking is in terms of the, in terms of this map.
Okay. There, this is one with showing all 50 parking stalls. So if you look at the parking stalls to the right, the ones that protrude further to the right, those are the ones that we want to not pave. And the ones, so from, from the building, you see there's, there's lines up on the, I don't have a pointer here, but there's lines up on the west side and on the north side, which is down to the right. Those would all be paved, and there would be a 40 feet of paving from the sidewalk, 40 feet into the parking lot, on both of those sides, on one end and the side. Now, we don't know exactly where all the equipment is going to, but typically, the equipment would be along the roadside. So we also have parking in between those buildings, because some of the employees actually work in those other buildings, and they don't even go into this building. They actually park along those other buildings to the east and, and enter their workplace right over there. So, but making, making us pave, you know, all of those, those parking stalls, I think, is, you know, it may make sense to you, but somebody has to pay for it, and somebody has to get a return for it, and, and there's no connection. There's no, no, there's no good reason. I mean, these guys are coming here with their farm trucks, and they're parking there, and we're going to put extra pavement for them. We want to have it look nice, and it will look nice, but there's already 40 feet of pavement plus a seven-foot sidewalk in the front of that building.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Fair, you have a question for the applicant representative? Okay. Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If, if this variance that you're requesting is approved, do you need that 20-foot parking lane still?
Well, we're, we're, we're proposing to put it, because the client wants to put it there. He, he wants to have the 40 feet anyway. Even if this was not a requirement, the client would like to have paving in front of his building. And, and it's not a, it's not a bad thing for him. He wants that there, but to go beyond into that area is something that is, we believe is really not a, it is, it's not that we don't have the parking stalls available on this property, and we can indicate them.
Okay. Yeah. Further?
Yeah, just for, but, okay, I'm not sure you're understanding what I'm asking for.
Okay, sorry.
Like, if you're going to have the 20 or 25-foot
Yeah.
laneway going through there, if you're, if you're going to eliminate the parking stalls on the right side, on the west side, you really don't need the lane, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
You're going to pave it, but it will not be necessarily, it'll be part of his lot, but it'll be paved.
It'll be part of his lot, but it's where you turn out and, like, where you back out on that, on that paving and driveway. So it, so it really gives a definition of where you want to keep the equipment away from.
Yeah.
So it, it's not a bad thing to have it there.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you. Yep. Is there anyone here wishing to object or have any questions on this file? Anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? Anyone here wishing to object or have any questions? Thank you. Mr. Workington, you want to add something before we close the public hearing?
Just perhaps for some, some background. While that is more or less correct as far as the zoning bylaw provisions, I'll just read for council's information the way the, the provision reads within the zoning bylaw, and that's Section 115.4b. "The owner must surface all required parking areas and driveways accessory to all other uses and non-accessory parking areas excluding single-family and two-family dwellings with asphalt, concrete, paving stones, or other surfaces approved by the city to a minimum surfacing standard as comparable to the adjacent street or lane surface. For industrial zoning districts M1, M2, and MMX only, if the required parking spaces number less than 10 required spaces, property owners may choose to apply for variance." While that is the wording within the zoning bylaw, in addition, the construction spec that the city's development, engineering, and permitting department applies consistently to applications is the requirement to hard-surface parking and public parking areas for both the public and for employees of particular properties. While it is true that the service road fronting the one side of the property is a gravelled surface, there is an asphalt surface on Clear Springs Road, and just with respect to a comparable property, if, if it does provide a relevant comparison for, for council's purpose, the Hens Brothers Equipment Dealership to the west opposite this particular property would be a comparable to this particular one. With respect to that property, there are a number of, or I should say, all of the parking stalls are hard-surfaced.
Thank you. Okay. Sorry. If you'll have to speak, if you do want to speak any further, you have to come to the podium one more time, just because it's all recorded. Yeah.
I appreciate that, and is correct that that parking lot is paved. I built that building, and it was paved before there was a paving lot, because the owner wanted it paved, so it would not really be a good comparison in this case.
Thank you. All right. We'll close the public hearing and open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Siemens.
Motion to approve both variations.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Fair. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I reviewed this property. I was on the property, and there's a couple of reasons why I think that we should agree with this variation. The zoning bylaw, 2055 is a good bylaw when it comes to retail commercial establishments, but there is an opportunity here. I think that there is a variation that makes sense here. This is an implement dealer, and the people attending this dealership don't drive cars necessarily. 90% will be in half tons. There will be quite a few that also come with their implements, because that's what they do here. They, they come to an implement dealer to get repairs done. Parking here is a, is very short-term. They are in to buy parts, and they're out there. There will be longer-term people, because they are selling tractors and equipment there, but that's limited as to how many vehicles are there. As stated in the report by the city manager, parking isn't an issue on the site. Part of the reason that we have parking requirements is that parking, when there's too many, not enough parking stalls and too many vehicles, it's pushed off-site. That's not the case here at all. And parking implements, trucks and trailers and so on, they can't park in those parking stalls regardless, so they will park across them, then it becomes an irrelevant discussion. But I think, overall here, it makes sense to me that we approve the variation as it stands, simply because of the situation.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Fair, anything further?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. I, as a businessperson on, on that stretch as well, I, I think that if we're going to force this business to have his entire front lot be parking lot, he won't have anything for his display at all. A display is what, really what drives a business. If you, if you don't have a, a display, you're not going to bring in the customers. You're not going to park your equipment in the back when, when you want to display it. That's why you buy properties where you can display this adequately. So I think that the, most businesses will know how much parking they require, and, and I think this is a very good example of that. If, if, if we were to force the 50 here, in this case here, he would have to reconfigure his lot entirely. He's already building to the front, because that's where he wants to show it to be. So I think he needs this for display, and I think that the other side of it is that the nature of the business is that he might well have farmers coming there with cultivators with droppings of all kinds on there, and you don't want to have that on asphalt, so I think that would be better on gravel.
Thank you. Further discussions? Counsel Penner?
I will support the motion to approve both variations. I do have some concerns, however, and I think council would be well-advised to remember that when we apply zoning bylaws to applicants, we need to do that with equity. I, I have some reluctance supporting the motion, but I understand some of the arguments. The, the reluctance comes from fairness of application. If we have a neighbor to the west that was compelled to pave his entire lot, and now we have a neighbor on the other side that's asking not to, that does not, does not really carry a lot of fairness with that, even though the circumstances may be slightly different. They're both large dealerships, implement dealerships, so I, I have some issues with that. However, I also see the common sense approach that Counselor Siemens is advocating, and I will support the motion.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counsel Swigstraw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things to consider here in terms of the application is that suppose for a moment we didn't have, you know, the bylaw, and we were just looking at it as, would it make sense to it make sense to require the additional parking, the additional paved parking? And certainly after hearing the case here and hearing the explanation, I think the obvious answer is that no, for this particular type of business with the way that it operates, it obviously doesn't make sense, you know, that yes, arbitrarily, we think that you need fifty paved parking stalls, our wisdom is greater than yours, I don't see that. Now, we obviously do have a bylaw, so we have to factor that in, we have to consider the issue of precedent, we have to consider the impact this would have on other businesses that want similar treatment and such. And when we consider variances, we ask ourselves the question, is the hardship, is the difficulty enough to warrant overturning to allow the exception? I believe in this case that it is, because we have here a fairly unique situation in terms of the type of business, the type of property. The request here is clearly laid out in terms of the explanation for where people park, the rationale for, we want the parking stalls here because we want it along the building, we don't, there's no need for the extra parking stalls over here, there will be additional gravel stalls that are being built. And so, on the balance, I think this is a pretty clear case where it makes sense to approve a variation, we allow an exception. And I'm not terribly worried about a whole slew of implement dealerships suddenly coming to us, and the reality is, is that if they do come to us, we look at these on a case-by-case basis. Sometimes we approve variances, and sometimes we don't. But in this case, a pretty straightforward case has been made, that in this particular situation, that arbitrarily applying the bylaw and saying, no, the magic number is fifty, even though it really doesn't fit this particular property, I think we'd all agree, if you took the bylaw and just looked at it, no, none of us would force them to have it. And so I don't think the concern about precedent is enough for us to deny the variance. I will support the motion as well.
Thank you. Further discussion from council? Anything in closing?
I think that most of it's been spoken for, but I think the bylaw is correct when it comes to retail application in different areas, but I think this commercial retail application here, I think it is the right thing to do to approve the variation.
Thank you. Counsel, obviously, we have the variation process for a reason, because there are variations in use and variations in type of property. And here, we have something somewhat unique, where you have one entrance that has pavement and all the rest that doesn't. It lends itself to looking at this logically, and so I'll support the motion. Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. Thank you. We'll now move to the, thank you, we'll now move to the delegation of Indigenous Municipal Relations, this is in regards to the 2018 assessment, and I will turn it over to you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Do we have time constraints tonight?
Normally, well, how much time do you need? Yes, yes, the answer is yes, yeah. If you can limit it to ten minutes, that would be appropriate.
Okay, all right. So, thanks so much for having us come out to speak to council. My name's Ed Klowje, I'm the acting district supervisor at the Assessment Services Office, and this is Britt Snead, in our office. We're here today because, as we're mandated by legislation, every two years, we have a province-wide reassessment, and the report before all of you is a copy of the report that we've prepared for the city of Steinbach. Every two years, we are required to update the assessments to a new reference point. The assessment for the 2018 assessment, for the 2018 tax year, is based on an April 1st, 2016 reference point. So what that means is every single property is valued as if it had sold on April 1, 2016. And we do that for every single vacant lot, every single house, every single apartment building in the province of Manitoba. That doesn't mean that we physically go out and inspect every single property every two years, that would be physically impossible. So what we do is we rely on what's happening in the marketplace with sales. So what I've done is I've brought along some sales, just to enlighten council in terms of how active the Steinbach real estate market has been, and what I did was I looked at the period from April 1, 2014, when our last reassessments ended, and I went to April 1, 2016. In that period, we had nine hundred and twenty-six properties sell within the city of Steinbach. And so that's out of approximately fifty-nine hundred rural entries in the city of Steinbach. And what we do is whenever a property sells, we investigate those sales. And in many cases, if it's a typical residential property, we've been to several times, we can verify that sales information with Keystone Matrix, for example. But often, there are properties that are outliers, properties that have sold for what's deemed to be an excessively high figure, or other properties that are sold for what's deemed to be a low figure, and we put more time and effort into investigating those outlier sales. And so, of those nine hundred and twenty-six sales that occurred in Steinbach, we used eight hundred and thirty-six of those sales to set our assessments. So based on our process of reviewing all sales, we filtered out ninety sales, as they were deemed to be either too high or too low, or left with the typical average market transactions, which is what our assessment base is trying to reflect. So, in the report that I handed out on page two of the report, there's a chart there, and it indicates what's happened to the various property classes within the city of Steinbach. And just for your information, the city's assessment base, on average, increased by one percent. That doesn't mean that every single property, every single vacant lot went up by one percent, it's just the reflection of what's happened to the total assessment base. You know, provincially, if you look at every single municipality and include the city Winnipeg, the average assessment increase was six percent, and there's reasons for that. Primarily, it's due to very active farm property sales, and a big jump across farming communities in Manitoba. When we look at the assessment base for the city of Steinbach, we see single-family residential properties overall declined in value by one and a half percent. Now, comparing that to the province, the average in Manitoba went up 1.3 percent. So it's very consistent throughout. The apartment sector went up 4.2 percent in Steinbach, provincially, it was 12.1 percent. Farm is where the biggest swing would be, the average increase there was 7.1 percent, provincially, it was 19.7 percent, so that's over a two-year period. The other area is designated recreational, so that refers to golf courses in Manitoba, and we're strictly referring to the land value, and not, say, the value of clubhouses and those properties. The average drop there has been 16.6 percent, and that's, again, typical throughout Manitoba, we've noticed quite a downturn with the sale of golf courses provincially. So, I don't golf, so maybe it's people like me that are leading that decline, but that's the impact there. Overall, the assessment base has increased by 1.1 percent in the city of Steinbach. City has a very diverse assessment base. I've been at some municipalities with very minimal commercial assessment bases. The city of Steinbach's very fortunate to have a very strong commercial base, and at about thirty-three percent of the portioned assessment value, which is great for, it's a sign of a very healthy economy. So, you might be wondering, what is the impact of the ratepayers of the city of Steinbach? And on page four of the report, we have a chart that illustrates when you look at the municipal levy and the school tax levy, what the average impact would be on a person's property tax bill. So, with a property where the, if you take your typical residential property where the assessment's dropping one and a half percent, the total amounts and taxes collected would be dropping by 2.4 percent. Whereas if you compare that to farm properties, their portion is increasing by 6.1 percent, and that's, again, because the shift is away from the single-family and residential components to farm properties, although the amount of farm properties within the city of Steinbach is quite nominal. There is a slight uptick in the overall revenue generated from commercial properties of a 1.2 percent increase. Now, at the bottom of the chart, it shows a 0.6 minus percent decline in the overall taxes collected, and what that's reflecting is there is some offloading of the school tax portion to the outlying municipalities surrounding the city. The bottom of page four, there's a chart that is highlighting the properties that will see increases and decreases with this reassessment. And I would caution counsel that this is a rose-colored glasses type of projection. It is assuming that the taxes collected are the identical amount for 2018 that were required for 2017. And so that's a perfect world scenario, and last time I checked, we don't live in a perfect world. Usually, there are increases in budgetary requirements from year to year, so I don't, wouldn't anticipate sixty-nine percent of property owners seeing a tax decrease next year, but at the same time, you won't be seeing a huge upswing in taxes collected within the city. Now, if you wanted to look at the portion that you control, specifically only the municipal tax portion, that would be on page five, and so, once you take the school taxes out of the equation, the numbers become clearer. With the single-family residential taxes collected, they're dropping two and a half percent, the farm increasing six percent, and the commercial increasing by 3.7 percent. Ultimately, when you look at a property with an assessment increase less than 1.1 percent, those people should see a municipal tax decrease. Properties with assessment increase greater than 1.1 percent should see a municipal tax increase. And again, that's a bit of a rose-colored glasses view, again, depending on the budgetary needs for the community next year. Now, with the reassessment, council does have options in terms of moderating tax shifts, and there are some options available, and we like to highlight those at these tax impact meetings. If council was to choose to do so, you could phase in tax increases and/or decreases, you would require, I guess, the municipal assessment allows that to happen. It has not occurred in the city of Steinbach, but that doesn't prevent you from doing that. There's also the option of varying property tax class proportions, different properties pay taxes on different portions of their value, residential properties pay taxes on forty-five percent of their assessed values, farm properties on 26 percent. So their option is there by regulation, if council was willing to do that, you could change that portion amount as well. And there's also a program where you can establish a tax credit program as well. So those are some of the options available. In terms of tax relief to property owners, there have been some measures implemented by the province over the last several years. The education property tax credit applies to all primary residences, and that's a $700 credit. If someone owns additional properties, that cannot be claimed on a second or third property, only on your primary resident. The senior's school tax rebate is a school tax credit for seniors up to a maximum of $470. There's also the homeowner's school tax assistance, which is a tax credit for low-income individuals of up to $175. And the farmland school tax rebates, and this won't be necessarily very applicable to the city of Steinbach, but the school tax credit for farmland owners is available for up to eighty percent of school taxes to a maximum of $5,000. So with this reassessment, I had to pass out a handout to everyone, and it's, what it is, is a chart, not a chart, it says, this is not a tax bill, at the very top of the page. What that is, is the assessment notice that has been...
Just so you know, you have two more minutes.
Okay. It's the assessment notice that's been mailed to all the property owners. It indicates what the land assessment is, what the building assessment is, what the total value is, in the middle of the page. If anyone has any questions about that value, they can go to our website, we have a very user-friendly map where you can click on your property, and there's, you'll see a map of the properties around you. We also list sales that were used in our analysis on the website as well. People are more than welcome to contact us at a 1-800 number, to also visit our office if they so desire as well. So, that's basically the presentation. If, if any questions, if any...
Good, thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Swexer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just specifically going to page five, the municipal, I think that is the only thing we have to overlook, so I'm pointing to analyzing the education tax levy. My question is, because it certainly appears like there's not a whole lot of change in terms, and we're used to seeing big changes, you know, where it goes, some people are seeing massive increases on their properties. Now, suppose that council was to keep the mill rate exactly the same as it is this year. So the mill rate, the municipal mill rate remains exactly the same. Does that, am I reading the chart correctly, that it would mean that on average, you'd see a slight decrease for single-family homes, a slight increase on average for apartments, an increase for farm properties, but really, we'd be taking in the same amount of revenue if the mill rate was kept exactly the same? Is that what the chart is saying?
In the case of, what it's saying is, I guess, our assessment figures for 2018 do not include any new construction at this point. We don't know what those values will be, because we haven't been able to assess those items yet. But currently, what we do is we look at the, look at the total assessment base, and if the statement at the bottom, I think, clearly explains that if the assessment increase is less than 1.1 percent, the person should see a municipal tax decrease, assuming the budget's the same, and that's...
Thank you, counsel Swexer.
Just, but just to clarify, because we have sometimes frozen the mill rate, I mean, this does happen, and so, if we do that, is this saying that on average, because in previous years, if we freeze the mill rate, then there's an assessment, in previous years, it goes way up for most people?
Yes.
That's what has happened, that's what we're used to. So my question is, if we do that this time, is this basically saying that there's not really going to be a whole lot of change on average, assuming that we were to freeze it? Is that what it's saying?
On average, there wouldn't be a big change. We're showing the assessment base is increasing by 1.1 percent. So if you would keep your mill rate the same, you generate an additional 1.1 percent in revenue. That's, most reassessments, this is my seventh reassessment, I've never seen a reassessment with this small of a shift in value.
Yeah, good, thank you. Counselor Siemens?
I had basically the same question, but just for clarification, since I'm a baby boomer, I live in a single-family residence, and now at my age, I want a downshift to a condo living, I'm going to get less value for my single-family residence, but my condo's going to cost me more, right? That's what this says.
What we're showing is...
But the good thing is, I'm going to get $400 more of a tax rebate when I turn sixty-five.
Okay, well, it's, demand and supply ultimately determines what you're paying. Part of this figure is new construction is factored into that as well, but if you're in a situation where you're selling your home and you're not capturing as much as you had hoped, and you're paying more than you would like to for a condo, yes, there's a net minus there, but I should caution council, this is up to April 2016. What's happened since is a different scenario, and those sales haven't been used in our analysis. And so, I know that if anyone keeps up to date with their real estate reports, last month, for example, in Manitoba, there were $500 million of real estate transactions that occurred. The average sale price went up 4.9 percent compared to a year ago. Well, that's not reflected in this assessment. This is as of April 1, 2016, so...
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Appreciate it. This will be important information for us, counsel, as we deliberate our preliminary budget and the study session in July, so this is good, good timing for this information. Thank you. All right, now let's move to 8B, the city of Steinbach, the Morphe here is slogan on page nineteen, additional information there. Mr. Workinteen, anything to add?
Just, again, it's a very brief cover page, there's really not much of a report. Council did review this policy, and... Council did review this policy and the intent at a past committee meeting, and in relation to that, the city has now received a copy of the licensing agreement from the Steinbach Chamber of Commerce with respect to the More For You Here slogan, with the appropriate schedules indicating some additional terms of reference that were also reviewed. Recommendation is, if council is prepared to proceed, that it authorize the entering into this agreement.
Okay. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councilor Swigstra?
I'll make the motion that we proceed.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Penner. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we've discussed at a strategic priority committee meeting, we, this is a good slogan. This is something that the Chamber of Commerce did some research in, and sometimes, there is, there are situations where other organizations do some good work, and it makes sense for us to benefit from it. And this is an amicable agreement between the city and the chamber, and it's a good slogan. There is more for you here in Steinbach in terms of, in terms of residences, in terms of businesses, and churches, and recreation opportunities. There is more for you here, and so it's a good slogan, and I think that we can, we can use it in our marketing.
Thank you. Anything further?
This looks quite intimidating, I have to say. Low weights written out. Is there any reason why there needs to be so much information on here, so intimidating?
Mr. Workinteen, can you-
Or is it just the nature of the-
Well, I can, I can give you my opinion. However, the, the agreement was drafted by the chamber. And I, I will, my understanding of the agreement is primarily focused around the fact that it is a registered trademark, and as those are, in my understanding, considered to be an item of intellectual capital. It's, it's more just a matter of the chamber, I believe, trying to protect its interests and its investment.
Okay. Well, having said that, I'm very pleased that we're moving forward with this. We want to work with our community, business community to promote our community, and I think there's a lot of synergy to be had from this. If we'd have two different slogans, I believe they would compete and perhaps cause confusion. It works much better to have one that we're united as a community, and I'm very pleased we're moving forward with this.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilor Fair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I, in principle, I, I like this. The, there are one phrase here that the city will primarily use as a slogan for more city facilities and events, and I've heard a lot of here about businesses and other things, that we are not permitted to use this for business. This is only for those specific items. I have a bit of an issue with that. I take some comfort in the fact that this will be reviewed in three years' time, and hopefully, by that time, even environment, some of those things. So I, I, I most support it in principle, but I do have some concern with that.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilor Siemens?
Clarification through you-
Sure.
-on the comment. My understanding would be that through the chamber, any business would be able to use that slogan. This is the city, this is the city of Steinbach using it. Is that correct? Did I get that correct?
Yes. The answer is yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, council, I think it's important to work together with the organizations that are doing good work in our community, and the chamber obviously is working hard for local businesses, and they have a system in place and a slogan in place that is working, and for us to work together with them and not create a duplication or competing scenario, I think, is appropriate. All those in favor? Carried. We have 9A. We have the counts payable in the back of the book. You've all had a chance to review these. Can I have a motion, please? Councilor Penner? Move to approve?
Yes.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Funk. Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a question. All those in favor? Carried. We have the financial statements for May in the back of the book that you've all reviewed. Can I have a motion to approve those, please? Councilor Siemens? Seconded by Councilor Funk. Any discussion? Anything further from council? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. We have the building permits, 9C. This is on page 26. You've all had a chance to look at this over. It's obviously a very good year. We're having a lot of activity over, I think, 73 housing starts to date, and we continue to see more rolling in even since this was printed out, so it's good to see. It continues to be a good year with almost $21 million already in permits by the end of May. There is a motion on the bottom of page 27. Can I have someone move that motion, please? Councilor Swigstra? Moved by Councilor Fair. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. We have excavator licenses on page 28. Can I have someone move acceptance? Thank you, Councilor Fair. Seconded by Councilor Penner. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor? I don't think there's ever been a question on excavator licenses since I've been here.
That's why I ran.
9E. We have the bylaw 2084. This is council remuneration. This is on page 32. You have information from, or the amended version, and this is on page, sorry, page 32. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councilor Fair, Funk? Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Penner. Any, any discussion?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't want to speak to it anymore. We've all, we've had many opportunities to speak about it. It's been in the news a few times already, but I'm glad to see that all the changes have been made according to how we've listed them, and I think now it's ready to move this forward. I think it's the right thing to do, and it's time just to start to vote for it.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. Can I have a motion for third reading, please? Councilor Penner? Seconded by Councilor Penner? I'll let Deb choose. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. Council, this does come into effect for July, and so there will be some, there will be, the budget will have to be looked at to find a few extra dollars, it's about $20,000. Mr. Workinteen, is it about $20,000?
Yes. The, the impact is expected to be approximately that amount for the remainder of 2017. It has not yet, has not been reflected in the city's 2017 budget. I would request council's direction as to where the source of funding should be.
What we will do is we'll have that, as we get more information on the budget, we can look at that at study session to see if there's any cost savings in other areas. So, thank you. Council, you're comfortable with dealing with that at that time? Thank you. We have bylaw 2076. This is page 36. This is a second reading. Council, how would you like to proceed? This is in regards to the bylaw enforcement. Mr. Workinteen, you maybe want to just give us a synopsis on this?
Yes. This administrative penalty bylaw 2076 was introduced to council for first reading on, on April 11th. And this is part of the overall revamp of the fine notices and administrative penalty notices, at least at this point, with respect to the city's traffic bylaw, and also the current handicap parking bylaw. And recommendation is to proceed to second reading, and then administration will continue to coordinate with, with other bylaws. There is actually one provided in the next agenda item, and the intent is to have both bylaws passed on the same date. But recommendation at this time for this bylaw is to only give second reading.
Okay. Thank you. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councilor Penner?
Yes, I move approval of second reading.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Swigstra. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. This administrative bylaw will help us enforce our parking bylaws, and we no longer have to go through the provincial courts to resolve parking tickets or any such, such issues or infractions. So I think it's, it's a wonderful, a welcome change to how we do business here, and we can adopt a more streamlined approach to how we deal with these matters.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I should also point out that this change is largely happening because it's a requirement to the province under the municipal bylaw enforcement act that the province has. We have to move in this direction. Parking can no longer be resolved at the provincial court. It has to be done at municipal level with an adjudicator, and so this is consistent with that. So whether we like it or not, I think there is some potential benefits to this, but we have to move in this direction. There really isn't any choice.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything in closing?
Nothing.
No. Council, this is something that we think in the long run will actually benefit not only the province to make things more efficient, but it also will lessen the challenges for municipalities and specifically Steinbach when it comes to costs incurred in regards to court cases, and so this should streamline the whole process. Call for the question. All those in favor? Carried. We will now move to 9G, the bylaw 2083, accessible parking. This is on page 47. Mr. Workinteen?
This is a new item. It is related to the, as I mentioned, the administrative penalty bylaw 2076 with respect to the parking fines that are identified within a couple of bylaws that the city of Steinbach currently has in force. The recommendation from committee meeting was to also consider revised amount for the, the fine structure that city currently has. So the, as a result, because the fine amount is listed within the current handicap parking bylaw, administration is recommending council's consideration for bylaw 2083, to be known as the accessible parking bylaw, essentially to increase the handicap parking infraction amounts from $50 to $100, and to make the formal amendment to the title of the bylaw being the accessible parking bylaw. Copy of the document is on page 49. Recommendation is for council to give it first and second reading.
Thank you. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councilor Penner?
Move first reading.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Fair. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, this bylaw will increase the fine as, as administration stated, and I'm happy to see that it also reflects the current language of accessible parking rather than handicap parking, and I think it's a step in the right direction.
Further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We're talking about terminology here, and a lot of times, 1.3, I've just had a suggestion that says physically disabled. We want to go down that route. Might as well say physically limited might be better terminology. I noticed that handicap, we can't get away from the handicap thing, and I don't know. I mean, it's, it's just a fact, I guess, but I think it's a good thing to see too many people parking there and walking towards it. It'll be a deterrent.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion? Councilor Penner?
Well, in order for fines to be an actual deterrent, they actually have to be an amount that people want to avoid, so we're increasing it, doubling it to $100, which is better. It's still not that significant, but I think if we want to be serious about our fines and people taking them seriously, they do need to have a higher dollar value than we've traditionally been placing on them, or at least, we haven't updated them for a while, so this is a good opportunity to do that, so people have a sufficient deterrent.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything in closing?
Nothing.
No. Council, obviously, we want to make sure that we have an accessible city. We have put a lot of work into our sidewalks. We also have, we enforce regulation when it comes to the minimum required accessibility parking spots, and to enforce those parking spots, you, like Councilor Penner has said, you do need an adequate fine if someone does choose to use it when they aren't permitted to. So I think $100 is more of a deterrent, and we obviously want to have people close to the door who need to be there. Call for the question. All those in favor? Thank you. Is there a motion for second reading, please? Councilor Swigstra? Moved by Councilor Funk. Any discussion? Anything further? Call for the question. All those in favor? Any questions of council? Seeing none, we'll move to the correspondence and petitions. St. Rat River Conservation District on page 50. Any questions? Councilor Fair?
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor. We had our first board meeting in the city of Steinbach this morning. It's a little bit, it's more convenient. The staff commented several times to me this morning that they really appreciated that everything was so convenient for themselves. It's good to see them in the city.
Thank you. Obviously, they play an important role in water management in our area, and it's good to have them in the city, absolutely. There is nothing further on the agenda. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Councilor Siemens? Seconded by Councilor Penner. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you.